Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
Our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education and empower students to be successful in the global community.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Item number 12, personnel matter. We've received notification that that is now going to be a closed session, so if you want to attend that. So with, if that's the only addition, so looking for motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, our true blue moment portion of our meeting. This is where we take time to talk about things that are going on in all of our buildings. We'll start with Lee Elementary, Mr. Wamsley.
Thank you. There's a lot of great programs that are happening at Lee right now, as well as towards the end of the school year. On May 12th and 13th is Grandparents' Day in Mrs. Corby's preschool classroom. May 13th, we have an upcoming parent meeting for students that are targeted to attend our summer school program.
The K Kids, excuse me, K Kids Art Auction will be at the Art Academy in Richmond. Proceeds will be used for future community service projects for K Kids. On May 18th, the third graders will begin their M-Step testing. We will also have an assembly for, a Bikes for Book Assembly, to recognize third grade students who read and wrote book reports and submitted them to Mr. Dave Showers at our local Masonic Lodge, for students to win books for that program. May 20th, Mrs. Corby's four-year-olds will visit the Detroit Zoo. Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Schroeder's second grade classes will take a historical walk through Richmond. And on May 20th, the fourth graders will also be visiting Greenfield Village. On May 21st, Mrs. Barrett and Mrs. Hall's class will take a historical walk again through Richmond to complete that project of the curriculum that they're doing. On May 27th, we have a preschool carnival. On May 28th and 29th will be Field Day for students at the elementary school. We'll have preschool graduation for the four-year-olds and Great Start students. And then finally, on June 1st, we'll have the PTO Carnival. So there's a lot of things going on at Lee.
Great, thank you. Next, the middle school. Mr. Bartels?
Good evening. Busy time of the year, it's hard to believe it's May already. Becky and I finished our MISD Principal Series training. This year, the book study was Total Engagement, which went along with Classroom Instruction at Works. We always get a lot out of our monthly two-and-a-half, three-hour meetings down there at the ISD. Our ISD does a great job with professional development. Kathy Campo and Jackie Davidson did an excellent job at our last half-day PLC meeting. They shared what they learned from at McCall. And we spent the entire PLC day working on the apps and all the things we can do with technology for, with our one-to-one devices next year with staff and students. I attended, and Ms. Borwick did as well, the In Richmond Friday Night Art Fest that we had, Art Eats and Music and Musician. It was well-attended. Special thanks to Molly Shaq, Stacy Newman, and Jackie Davidson for helping with the event to show off the great things our students do. Also, special thanks to Kathy Campo because Jackie Davidson's artwork, you were able to click on the picture and the student would come up and interview, and it would explain the reasoning behind the art that they did. So it was quite unique to mix in technology with the art, with them being interviewed and explaining their works. We worked on the district's school improvement team. Our last meeting, we worked on our tiered support systems for our students. Last week, we had an MISD Sit Day. Our Sit Team went down to the ISD and worked with the ISD consultants for a report, a state report that's due September 1st. We're about 95 percent done. We surveyed staff last week, and we're going to survey students and parents between now and July 1 to complete that report. Our PTA had elections, and Mrs. Slabink is our new president-elect. Special thanks to Mrs. Pierce for numerous years through the elementary. She has an eighth grader, her last child, coming through, will be a high schooler next year. But Mrs. Pierce has been extremely dedicated to the students of Richmond Community Schools, and special thanks to Mrs. Pierce, Mrs. Lynn Pierce. And we're always looking for parents to join, so take a moment to say it on TV. If you're interested in becoming a PTA member for the middle school or elementary, we'd be more than happy. The band concert last week was packed. It was standing room only, and it was an awesome experience. They played Phantom of the Opera, a tribute song, through playing most of the Phantom of the Opera songs, and it was quite a joy to listen to. The other part of the half-a-day PLC day we had, we worked on the survey, our NWA results to guide our instruction and teaching teacher best practices. This past Friday, we had our Friday Morning with Moms. Traditionally, this is the second year, we're going to keep it going each year. We're going to do it on the Friday leading up to Mother's Day to thank our mothers. It was well-attended, and a special thanks to the PTA, National Junior Honor Society, Student Council, and the staff for helping make the event successful. Last Friday, 10 of our talented and bright female students, grades six through eighth, attended the MISD Science and Career Symposium. Jackie Davidson and Kathy Campo, being a mathematics teacher and technology teacher, took them there, and this is the second year we've attended, and we got great feedback. Fifth grade is starting their one-room schoolhouse field trips, where they take their class there for the day, and they take their lunch there, and they teach in the one-room schoolhouse as part of their standards, just to teach how it was back in the day. Seventh grade went on a field trip to the African-American Museum down in Detroit. It's the largest African-American museum in the country. And then they went to Pizza Populous, and they also got to tour the Wayne County building down there, the city office. And it was a great experience for our students. Fifth grade last week did a quick field trip to the Earth Day movie. Sixth grade did an activity where they went to Strikers on the half-day, and they had a math activity to go along with bowling. Special thanks to Mrs. Nolan for organizing that. Next Tuesday, our fourth graders will be walking over and spending some time with our fifth-grade teachers, showing them around the building and what to expect for next year, just easing some of their anxiety. May 27th, I said it at the last board meeting, it would be on the 14th, but May 27th is the National Junior Honor Society inductions at 7 o'clock. So it's May 27th at 7 o'clock in the High School AOD. And currently, we're, you know, it's that time of the year, we're working on scheduling. We're putting some final touches on to scheduling for our classes for next year. And we're also working on a before-school orientation to get a lot of the one-to-one devices out and a lot of the paperwork done before school actually starts, and we'll have more on that in future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mashon, preschool?
Good evening. All of our students have finished taking the M-Step, yay. And we are now working on finishing our NWEA. Our plan is to have all of our testing done by the end of next week. Our staff during our PLC time have continued to share their technology expertise. We too had staff that went to McCall, who shared some of the things that they picked up there. We also reviewed our perception data, which we had a survey, surveys going out to our students, our community, and our parents that's been running for a couple of weeks. So we took a look at that data. We will, in turn, be inserting that information into our school improvement documentation this Wednesday, as the high school's FSI Day is this Wednesday at the ISD. We had a great Teacher Appreciation Week last week. I would like to publicly thank our community. It is unbelievable. We had donations from Krogers, from the meat market, from McDonald's, from, I can't believe how many different community members. I'm going to try to get it all out on our website, just to thank them. I would also like to personally thank our two Media Center Pear Pros for putting the whole week together. They didn't have to bring a lunch one day last week. We had them covered. This is the time of year for award ceremonies, and we have had several this past couple of weeks. I'd like to start with the Macomb County Academic Banquet. This is our top students in the county, and we were honored to have three this year. Ben Evans, Bo Brockett, and Sarah Campbell represented Richmond High School as our top academic scholars for Macomb County. We also host, we didn't host, we went to the BWAC, which is our league awards ceremony last week. It was held at Lakeview Hills Golf Course up in Croswell-Lexington, and we were again honored to have several more students in this group. Ben Evans, Bo Brockett, Sarah Campbell, XJ Knuckles, Jacob Schmidt, and Beth Bennett. We, in turn, will be having our honors ceremony, or awards ceremony, this Thursday at 7 o'clock in the high school auditorium. I too wish to express the fabulous concerts we had last week. We had both the choir, high school choir concert last Monday night, and then we did have the band concert on Wednesday night. And as Mr. Bartel stated, just two fantastic jobs with all the students involved in it. We've really grown and have a great fine arts program in that area. We had a successful prom on Friday evening. We were at Four Lakes Golf Course in Kimball, Michigan. Went very well. We had no issues, and everything ran smooth. May 27th is our undergrad awards ceremony, and that will be 1 o'clock held here at the high school auditorium. That's it from the high school.
Thank you. Mr. Boinck, Student Activities and Athletics, please.
Hello, everyone. Most of our spring sport programs are still going on. However, tennis has completed. Girls tennis team has finished undefeated in the BWAC. The BWAC conference match was rained out on Saturday, so that'll be made up on May 19th. Cancellations in the spring have caused some severe challenges for rescheduling, but I'm working with other athletic directors to make sure we get in as many athletic events as we possibly can. We are hosting the BWAC Track Meet next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Field events will begin at 1 o'clock, so it will get going before the school day even ends. In the BWAC, our monthly BWAC Athletic Director Meetings, in recent months, there's been dialogue about BWAC expansion. And a couple of the athletic directors took, went out and surveyed some other schools and see what kind of interest there was about expansion. There was some interest. The motivation, from what I gathered, was to try to see if the conference could go from eight schools to potentially 12, and then tier them with schools at smaller enrollment versus schools with larger enrollment. After a few months of investigate and dialogue, the last meeting we had, it seemed to run its course, and there didn't seem to be any motivation to continue the dialogue. And pretty much, at least the athletic directors felt that we could table that issue, unless principals or superintendents want to pick it up. At least the athletic directors felt it was just okay to stay where we are for right now. I've been working with Mr. Wamsley and Hendrick with the company that is scheduled to finish the track, so I'm looking forward to that. That's going to be real exciting to see when it's absolutely completed. The Spring Fest is coming up quickly. It'll be this Sunday, May 17th, from noon to 3:00 on our campus. It is going to be a wonderful event for the entire family. I'm really excited, and at least the extended forecast looks like Sunday's going to be a good day. So hopefully, everyone can come out. And if you're so inclined, at 12:15, if you want to get in line and throw a few balls at the dunk tank, you'll get a chance to put me in the water. So if you would like to do that, that would be fun. I am finishing fall and winter scheduling, going through that, especially trying to button up some winter schedules. Got to work pretty far in advance to get basketball done. I'd like to give a shout-out to Mr. Boinck and his group with the, went to the Special Olympics last week in Warren. It's always a wonderful event. I know it rained on them a little bit, but they had a great time, and I'm really, really proud of what they do. And finally, I got a very nice email from De La Salle High School. We hosted them in baseball last week, and after the game, we gave them a meal, and so on their way home, they could have a meal. And I got a wonderful email from De La Salle, just talking about how much of a class act that is, and the kind of spirit and enthusiasm and sportsmanship that they look for when they're competing on the field. And they wanted to make sure that we got that information, and we understood that they really thought it was a very classy thing to do.
Thank you. Okay, next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything? No? That's a first in a long time. Okay, next, our presentation portion of our meeting, middle school walk-in freezer. Mr. Wamsley?
Thank you. If you recall, on March 17th, it was brought to my attention that our walk-in freezer at the middle school had begun rising off the floor. And in your packet, you have pictures of what was taken that day regarding what the freezer looked like. What we have found, working with our insurance adjuster, as well as the contractors who originally installed the freezer and did a lot, have done a lot of work on it, is there was a, over the summer when the roof was being put on, water got into the insulation of the freezer, and as it thawed and had nowhere to go, it went below the freezer into the pit area and began, and that's since rising the freezer up. The freezer is currently still usable, but it needs to be replaced. So in the packet, I have been working with, like I said, with the insurance company. It is covered through our insurance company, and they will seek whatever avenues they need to take for it not being the district's fault or faulty equipment. So we've been working with the company's Stafford and Smith, who installs freezers. And in your packet is the recommendation for the purchase of a brand-new walk-in combination cooler freezer, which totals to about $21,440. There's an estimated cost of the removal of the old freezer, as well as the labor that's included in that. There's also the cost of the electrical that will go to change the electrical for the new installation, the plan review at the state, and so forth. So the total cost of this project to remove the old one and install a new one is $57,180. The district's portion of that is our deductible. The rest is paid for by insurance. So once it is installed, then the insurance turns around and issues us a check for reimbursement. So any questions on the walk-in freezer? That is a action item tonight, so that we can get the process going, so that after school gets out, we can get this freezer removed and the new one installed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. Next, item B, janitorial services.
Several weeks ago, the district put a RFP out, a request for proposal for janitorial services. Part of that process dealt with prospective vendors, walking through our facilities, checking out the scope of the work, what it entailed, et cetera. After that required walk that was completed, we had six companies that chose to bid on the project. We looked at the applications, obviously, cost is part of a factor. The big picture project is the other factors, too, in terms of what they can do, what potentially could they offer the district, in addition to what we currently receive, and so forth. Tonight, John Allen, President of the DM Burr Group, is here to present an overview of the DM Burr Group and the custodial service recommendation that's before you tonight. At this time, I'll introduce John Allen. Yeah, the packet he's passed, it is in your board packet, but this is a larger copy. Might be a clearer copy than the one that I scanned and put on your board packet. I gotta give mine to Terry.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to try and be brief with this and go over this packet with you, but as you can see, the first page talks about partnership, and that is key to us. We want this to be a relationship between our company and the school district. We think that when we ask our employees, where do they work? We expect them to say Richmond Schools, not DM Burr, because we want there to be a sense of belonging. We want them to be part of the Richmond family. We don't care that they necessarily work for us, they get a paycheck from us, and we definitely give them direction, but we want them to be part of the district here and help the community. Our overview is, we were founded in 1998 by Dave and Michelle Burr. They're still involved on a daily basis. I'm actually not the president, I'm the chief operating officer. I got a promotion just a couple of minutes ago, so, thanks for that. We have currently about 850 employees across the state of Michigan. We are office, we have an office in Flint, an office in Troy, and an office in Grand Rapids. And we take care of 41 school districts across the state of Michigan. We maintain about 10 million square feet of cleaning on a nightly basis. And we're a member of numerous different building service organizations that we participate in on a yearly basis. Our staffing process is, we plan on interviewing the existing staff first, those that currently work in your district. And from there, we will then go to your local community and try to hire from, within locally, and to be able to get that workforce. We have to do all the background checks, the reference checks, we do the Michigan State iChat, and we also do the LiveScan, which is the FBI check through using your agency ID number. After all that is taken into consideration, we then bring the list to the district and say, this is who we plan on bringing into your district. You know your community better than we do, but we, you might know someone that maybe is not going to be a good fit, you can let us know that. Our student action policy is actually, every employee that is hired on has to sign it yearly, at the beginning of their employment, and then every year. It talks about what you can and can't do in regards to working with staff and children. And it's just a precautionary document to be able to protect not only employees, but also the children. And so it goes over a bunch of different aspects that we have them read over and understand. And then there is a zero tolerance policy in regards to that document. Training is key to our success. When we start our employees, there's a Safe Schools, which is a kind of a portion of SETSEG. We have a four-hour video orientation, then we have one-on-one orientation with our HR recruiters. And then we actually take those individuals, those employees, and we train them for anywhere from two to four days, depending on how fast they catch on to the job that we have going on. And we, for this location, we would actually train them off-site at another school district nearby. So that way, when they come in day one, that they're actually ready to go, and all they have to do is familiarize themselves with the buildings, instead of having to understand the job and the scope of work and everything. We do cover everything from chemical training to equipment training to their runs, what their responsibilities are. All of them are provided with the scope of work and a outlined spreadsheet of the map of the school, and it's highlighted, and it explains what their area of the responsibility is. Employee benefits, we provide health insurance for all our employees. There is a dental and vision option as well for the employees. We provide short-term, long-term disability, voluntary life insurance, paid holidays after 90 days. We provide a week's vacation after they've been with us for a year. We also have Employee of the Month, which is a cash award, and it can be nominated from someone from the school or from the supervisor at the account. We have uniforms that are specifically identified of our company. We have a safety award program that comes from our safety manager and is done on a monthly basis. And then we also have advancement opportunities for people to move up within the company. We feel that that is a way to be able to build, build up the people, and they have a ability to move up in a company, which is usually a great thing for someone, instead of being stuck at the same place. The next one talks about our dedicated management team. If you look to the right, would be the employees working at Richmond Schools. The next one is our onsite supervisor. Our onsite supervisor will be here full-time. They will be here five days a week, working in the district. This will be the only district that they'll be assigned to, responsible for making sure that quality inspections, that stuff is getting done, that the different aspects of the job are being accomplished. Above that is Larry Franz Scobiac. He's a regional manager for us. He actually lives just in K-Pac, so not far from here at all, and he has this side of the state, responsible for multiple schools. Above that is Kristy Grochey, who's our Director of Operations, who, actually, they've met both of those people in our interview, and then myself. Our staffing consists of three day-shift custodians that are full-time, three-and-a-quarter night-shift custodians at the high school, two-and-three-quarter night-shift custodians at the middle school, two custodians full-time at the elementary. And then we have substitute custodians that we would have for this district in case someone was on vacation, someone was sick, they'd be able to fill that role. That's no additional charge to the district. We set aside 160 hours annually for weekend events, based on the need of the district. And we also have one full-time district supervisor. So the total staffing would be 12 full-time employees, working Monday through Friday. Keys to a smooth transition is communication, that we're going to have to sit down and talk to make sure that we understand everything that you guys got going on this summer, understand from us what we need and from you what you need. And then another key is for us to be able to hire existing staff members that work in your district that are key to the, how well it's going right now. So we want to make sure that we get those right people to work for us. Training at nearby districts, instead of bringing them in day one, we start at another facility at no cost to you. We want to make sure that we bring them in trained and ready to go day one. You have access to the corporate management team, 24 hours a day, 7 You have access to the corporate management team, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We all have our cellphones on, and we're available. We're a customer-service-driven company. If you have an issue and need to talk to us, you pick up the phone and we'll take care of it. We succeeded in implementing contracts in as little as two weeks. It's not the best, but normally, we ask for thirty to forty-five days to be able to take care of all the planning, and we also use our electronic tracking system, which pretty much puts everything into dates from all of our different corporate office people, from accounting to HR to our operations, on what exactly needs to be done and when it needs to be done, so that we make sure that we stay on track. Some of our clients that we have, as you can see, Lake Orion, Romulus, South Redford, Davidson, Emily City, Holton Lake, we're kinda all over the state, everywhere up into Escanaba, to Mantalona, to the southwest side of the state, kinda spread out all over. Why choose the DM Burr Group? We're gonna provide you with a smooth transition. I know that that can always be kind of a scary thing as to what's gonna happen, and we've kinda mastered it, and we wanna make sure that we come in and there's no hiccups, and that we are making sure that, at the end of the day, your buildings are taken care of. Safety first always. We wanna make sure that we're providing a safe environment for not only your kids and your staff and the parents, but also our employees. We know schools. We do more than just schools. Our company is actually multifaceted. We have five companies under the DM Burr Group umbrella. We self-perform all of it, we don't outsource anything. So, under our facilities division is custodial maintenance, landscaping, snow removal, and then, under our mechanical division, is HVAC, electrical plumbing, so heating and cooling, and we're licensed, we have unlimited boilers license, we have a master electrician's license and a master plumber's license, so the ability to take care of that mechanical side. We also have a security division licensed through the state of Michigan, both armed and unarmed security, and then we have a disaster restoration division, along with a janitorial supply company. So, we're able to buy all of our consumables, paper products, chemicals, equipment, at cost, and able to pass those savings on to the district. We have full-time dedicated corporate training staff. We have a full-time dedicated corporate supervisor that's gonna be assigned to the district. We have full year-round staffing during the summer. We do not take off, we do not cut back in our staffing, we stay the same levels to make sure that when you guys come back to school in September, it looks beautiful and it's ready to go. Same with during the Christmas breaks and stuff like that. We wanna make sure those are some times that we can get some extra cleaning done. Customer service is key. It's, districts and educational professionals communicate better than any other profession, probably in the United States, and you know people on the other side of the state, and the last thing we wanna do is have a bad name and come up in conversation as to, no, we never wanna be able to do work with DM Burr, and so, we wanna make sure that we're always doing what we say, and that takes us, me, to integrity. Everything that I'm up here telling you and everything that I've told the superintendent in our previous meetings, I wanna make sure that we stay true to everything we've told you, we wanna make sure that we fulfill all the obligations that we did, and if we don't, then I don't look like a smart guy at the end of the day, and I wanna make sure that my name is not, you know, grounded in the dirt, so. We have a scholarship offer to the district, and that is two-thousand dollars per year to one graduate. We ask that they turn in an essay to our owner and any of those people that are interested. They turn in an essay, our owners read over them, and they pick a winner every year for a two-thousand-dollar DM Burr scholarship. And what it's intended for, we're not looking for the rock star four-point-oh, four-point-two person, we're looking for the person that might be struggling, that might need that extra help to get them through maybe a computer, or, you know, just that extra money for books for their first year of college, so that's a way for us to be able to give back to the community. And I'll just leave you on the last slide, the last piece of paper, just tell us about all the different facets of our company and what we can do for the district. And if you have any questions, feel free to answer them.
Do you have any questions?
I'm not sure with the smooth transition chart, so normally, what I call re-badging, what's the normal percentage that you, is that normal for you, that you re-bad?
A lot of it depends on, your district, you are gonna know the people that work in your district better than we are, so when we have an open house and we ask those people to come in to fill an application and let them know that we're interested, we can't necessarily call the other company, but we can call the district and say, "Hey, what do you think about employee X, Y, and Z?" We can get that feedback as to how you guys think about them, and then we can move forward in that process, and it all depends, sometimes it's seventy-five, eighty, sometimes it's ten percent, it all depends on what's going on in the district.
The intent is, based on current employees, to offer them, I mean, it's depending on their own personal situation, whether they want to, but offer them the option of joining the DM Burr Group first. Working through that, it may not be the same type of role that they're doing now, depending on where the staffing, the cleaning of the buildings, but yeah, that's what we can.
All right, the second question I had, the onsite supervisor, is he solely a supervisor, he or she, or do they actually do some duties as well?
They have a small run, based on the size of the district. What we call a run is a set assignment every night, and I think it's less than two hours a night, so which allows them to do six hours of management in the buildings, and since your buildings are so close in proximity, it enables them to be able to do quality inspections. We ask that our manager meet with the principals at least once a week to kinda touch base, to build that relationship. They're the heartbeat of that building, so they're gonna know what's going on, so during the week, at least one time, they stop in and just kinda stop, and more if needed, and also stop in with whoever your point person is from the district.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else?
What kind of turnover do you see in your employees?
A lot of it depends on if you're in a rural or urban area. When we have, for example, up in Mantalona, Holton Lake, up in the thumb, we almost have zero turnover. When you're in a more urban area, let's say, down in Detroit, in EAA, you have a little bit higher turnover. We have also found that, we actually were just talking about this today with the district, that when you go in to work with the district and you might have zero turnover, and you kinda question the employees as to, what is good about working at this district, why do you love staying here, what's great, and there's a sense of belonging. They include them in to their, they include them in of the district, for example, small things, like including them into the yearbook, as, you know, when you put in your janitor as in the yearbook. They invite them to a training, they invite them to a staff luncheon. The way that they treat them, the principal might take two minutes out of his day to stop in and say hi to everybody, so that they feel like they're part of the team, and that's like in the very beginning, when I said partnership, when you ask them who they work for, they're gonna say Richmond Community Schools, instead of DM Burr, because we want them to be part of the family here. So, it all depends on where you're looking, but anywhere from like nine to fourteen percent is what we're looking at for turnover.
And the transportation here, just looking compared to, what does that consist of?
Transportation is cleaning the transportation building, the lounge, the bathrooms that are over there. There's an office for the transportation supervisor, and then the dispatches, there's a separate office for the mechanic and his computer, that's about it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions for Brian?
I just have a follow-up. In your packet, one of the questions that was asked regarding the cost of if we were to do this in-house, there's a chart in there that talks about in two thousand and nine what the cost of custodial services was, and if I'm not mistaken, Vicki, that was the year that we went with a third party that year? That was the last year we had them in-house. And so, when you look at the proposed cost with the DM Burr Group and costing, outside in, excuse me, in-housing at ourselves, you'll see the cost comparison there, and it does largely, the initial cost we would have is the total equipment cost upfront, where the equipment cost is spread out, with all the companies that bid on it, it was spread out over several years, to absorb that cost.
How many quotes can you get back?
We received six quotes back from the companies, which is in the action item. Two of them were, I would say, well out of our price range. The other four were pretty competitive. There was one that was extremely low, but in the interview process, it was revealed that they have no school experience, they're more of a city hall, parks and rec style, and so, when we started talking about the needs, particularly at an elementary school, you know, they spill milks and stuff, that was a new concept to them, and we eliminated them relatively quickly in the process, realizing that we can't, I didn't wanna take that risk of being their first school. So, the others are relatively in alignment with, from a cost perspective.
Anybody else? Okay.
I guess, Brian, just for everyone that doesn't have packets, where the pop or the period performance was one year, or these were three years?
It is a three-year contract. The prices range from the highest bidder to be, for the three years, one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, to the lowest bidder of eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, so the scope of that three-year contract, most of them are about the one million, one hundred thousand range for that three-year.
Thanks for the clarity.
And thank you.
Yeah, thanks for putting together the in-house cost there.
Okay, next is the MISD biennial election meeting. This is an item that we do when members of the Board of Education of the ISD, when there is a seat open, and I discussed with Brian, I don't remember that we had to do it in two meetings before, but the rules that we have says that that is what we need to do. So, what we are gonna do here first tonight is to designate a person and an alternate person to go and cast our vote for the person that's running for the Macomb ISD board member seat. This year, there's just one person running, and it's Teresa Janey, and she's running for her own seat to get back on the board. In previous years, there have been other people, there have been more than one person to run, so that we would discuss at the next meeting, the candidate that Richmond Community Schools Board of Education would support, and then we would make a motion or resolution that says we're casting our vote for this person, and then whoever we choose to be our person to cast the vote, goes and does that at that meeting. So, what we're doing tonight is we will pick somebody to cast our vote, and in the last couple of years since I worked at the ISD, I've been the one to go and cast our vote, and I would be willing to do that again. I mean, I'm right there, so. Yeah, yay. So, that settles it, yep. So, anybody have any questions about that? I think Chris is probably the only one that hasn't been a part of knowing that that's what we do, so I think everybody else, we've done it before.
Just to declare, in your packet, you'll see a sample one resolution to identify one of our board members and an alternate to be going there. The sample two will actually come at the next board meeting when we cast the ballot.
Right, we have to do it in two meetings. Tonight, we'll pick who's going to vote, go and cast our vote, and then at the meeting on the twenty-sixth, we will do the second resolution saying who we're gonna cast our vote for. Okay? All right, next, public comment, the portion of our meeting that if anyone in the audience would like to address the board, they can. Please remember that it is not a question-and-answer situation. If you have something you'd like to say, we ask you to come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes to speak, and if there is an issue, something that you would like an answer to, there's a card up there to put your name and telephone number, and someone will get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is it Chris?
Yep.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion that includes, Terry, do we have? Take one, we have closed session minutes as well. So, it includes minutes, claims and accounts, and personnel report. Is there any discussion?
Just that, personnel report, retirement letter from Linda Corby, and that just is hard for some of us to see, but we know that it's, you must feel it's time, so thank you so much for all you've done, for all the kids in this community.
Well, and look how big the smile is on her face, so what does that tell ya?
I can tell you that the day she turned that in, I think she walked by the office a couple times before she had to physically turn it in. She is being honored this Thursday as one of the outstanding preschool teachers by the radio station, and I'm just drawing a blank on it, so.
Cute country.
Out of Port Huron?
And so, they are coming Thursday to honor her in their class, so well worth it, and great team, so.
Good for you. Good for you. Good deal. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, all those in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Action item, approval of the contract for the walk-in freezer. There is a sample resolution?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Stafford Smith for the demolition and installation of a walk-in combination cooler freezer at the middle school for an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, for with funding from the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen general budget, is authorized to be reimbursed by SETSEG, less the district's deductible as presented in the attached documentation.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
And do we have multiple votes for this as well?
This was done by the company that actually installed the exact same, and the insurance company would rather go with that company since they already know the existing program or the existing equipment, thank you.
Wasn't there anything to do that?
The week school gets out, so we get out on the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, Monday the eighth, to begin the demolition, as well as that week will also be our target week to begin the dishwashers that were approved at a previous board meeting, so to get all that done, cleaned up as quickly as possible. The freezers will be shut down the week of the end of school, so we don't have to transport food, so that's why we're waiting till that time.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Tracy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, approval of contract for janitorial services.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with the DM Burr Group for janitorial services, beginning July one, two thousand and fifteen, with, for with funding from the district's general budget, is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have three bids that are very close to the price, and they're five, six dollars now, like, do we choose DM Burr or the other two?
We look at staffing levels that we're providing. DM Burr had a larger staffing level than the others. We looked at, as I've been talking to the board about maximizing our resources and streamlining costs, we looked at what other components the companies could offer us to reduce costs that we have within the district, whether it's our own internal district staffing costs and reallocating resources, as well as our current costs, so.
Anything else? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Eleven C, resolution to do- 11C, resolution to designate electoral representative and an alternate for the ISD election. I've already said I'll do it, so whoever wants to.
This is happening on June 1st.
Yes.
June 1st, 26th.
Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday. And I think it's at 4 o'clock, something like that?
Time, you can like, from, anytime from 4 to 7 or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Someone you can go? I could, I could be the alternate.
Okay, if someone would like to. Would just simply be a motion to appoint me as the electoral representative for the election and Tracy as the alternate.
I make a motion to accept Margaret Toto as the designated for the electoral representative for the June 1st biennial election meeting with Tracy Bartel as the alternate.
Support.
That was Bridgette that I heard there. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing, Bridgette's for.
He's for, I'm sorry.
All those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, we're moved on to our personnel matter. I look for a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We are going to adjourn to another room, correct, Mr. Wallace?
Down the hallway where we.
Okay, we are now back in open session. Looks like 11:08. Whoops, at this time? Is there someone that would like to make a motion regarding the personnel matter?
I make a motion to terminate Paula Dunker from employment with Richmond Community Schools as presented in the language of the prepared resolution. This termination is effective immediately.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. Tracy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 11:09.